...a free country that we can carry on our own business while we just ask tonight as we try to carry on the business for the city of Hartford that you got our thoughts, got our words, father, just got our motivation that it be to the benefit for the people of Hartford. We ask these things in your name, amen. All right, I know one visitor that we've got, Dan, you all make your presentation about the audit tonight for us.
As usual, you have two things. The staple one is the one that we're required to give you because, you know, the audit is basically conducted here at City Hall and our contact during the audit is with the mayor and Lisa and the staff. In some cases, the council is not even aware that an audit's been conducted or what it's about. You know, there, I mean, see through this, the only major estimate is depreciation expense, no difficulties dealing with management performing the complete audit. And the only thing I can say was difficulty in audits is because I'm familiar with the term. This is a single audit this time because of all the federal money that you had, and that takes it to a totally different level. And it becomes not just what the financial side of it is, but how you handle federal money. But at any rate, we didn't make any exceptions in this for course, section 14. So the audit report is the bound one. And then on page one is the actual opinion letter. That is a clean opinion. The statement net position on page four is the one that getting in 2004, government's been required to report everything, one presentation on a business-like basis where when you borrow money, it's a liability. When you purchase fixed assets like police cars and fire engines and so forth, then that's an asset, it's appreciated, just like it would be for private business. Bottom line with this on net position, governmental activities and this principal general fund, bottom line is about 2.2 million. And in business talk, it's almost 5 million. So in total, it's about 7.2 million bottom line, which is equivalent to that presentation of what you'd say would be the net worth of the city. And page five is the income statement under that presentation. And the first column, the expenses, and the reason that this is required to be reported in this manner is because the purpose of the city is to provide services to its residents. So it begins with expenses and then to the right and to the bottom, it goes into how you pay for that. And governmental activities, if you go across the top of that, if you depended on just what you charge anybody for, the city would've lost almost a million dollars. But the bulk of the revenues for the city are things at the bottom like property taxes, franchise taxes, occupational tax and so forth. So when that's all said and done, the bottom line changes in net position. On the governmental was good, 244,000 positive. And the business-type activities of water sewers was positive, 245, 544, bottom line was 489, 556 to the good. And that restatement, that's another one of those pension-type things, it's HOPE have. And then beginning with this year, June 30th, 18, you have to report not only what the city's proportionate liability of that underfunded state pension plan is, this is also the city's portion of post-employment benefits being health insurance, that the city has a portion of the fact that under CER is that health insurance is provided for retire. And so that picked up an additional $534,000 that reduced in net position by for the potential of what the city could be Page six is the balance sheet of the normal presentation, where pretty much all you book are current assets and current liabilities. And then you see the bottom line, how you get from total governmental fund balance of a million, 481, down to the 2.2 million on the net position. And page seven is the income statement under this presentation. And again, on the general fund, it was positive, 298,491 dollars. And as Lisa and Mary can tell you, once you've been on this council for a while, that hasn't happened every year in Hartford. You've spent a lot of years of having to borrow money to finish out the year for, but basically the general fund, and when we get to it, even the proprietary funds are much improved from what they've been in the past. Page nine is the water sewer and sanitation broken down, net position on those. The only one of those actually has a deficit at the end is the water fund. Sewer has 5,363,897 positive and sanitation, 67,894. And if you look then on page 10, that's the income statement for it. And water really improved by 224,000 dollars, except for again, that restatement that cost 210,000 dollars, a restatement for the outstanding health insurance liability that could potentially be assessed somewhere down the road. Page 11 is cash flows, if money, safe money in and money out. Page 12, the new three, that's the payroll fund, it's just a clearing account. This change with this HOPE have added about seven pages to the notes, as if they want enough already, but the notes now extend all the way to page 38. Most of these are just routine explains what the accounting principles are for the city. Page 23 is the changes in fixed assets, things that were added during the year, principally being, if you look down, about halfway down, construction in process, and that's all the water improvements that weren't quite put into service by the end of the fiscal year, but they were shortly thereafter. And then the bottom shows depreciation and how it is allocated. Page 24 shows the debt. As far as anything to do with governmental activities, 50,000 addition one time in that, but then 100,000 repaid. So it ended in the year, started the year owing 50,000 dollars on operating loan, and end of the year, it was that was completely paid off. And then all the rest of them, all those leases, anything that has to do with any of those other debts, there's nothing new on it. It was all just repayments. Then of course, there was a short-term loan from Kentucky Water Finance for 615,000 dollars, and that's basically repaid out of the bond issue. Page 25 shows what it takes to retire all the debt. And then the governmental side, general fund basically, they owe 29,000 dollars. And then the bottom, top of page 26 shows the debt service to water and sewer, what it would take to retire all of that. Interest and everything would finally be retired in 2054, total with interest, with principal and interest. If it's not paid off in advance, it's almost, almost 4 million dollars. So then page 26 through 38 are all notes pretty much related to pension and outstanding health insurance. Couple of little notes on page 38 that go into explaining where the proprietary adjustment came from, almost entirely due to the OPEB, other than not picked up a 75,000 dollars to Centaun that had been floating around for a while. I think it was just finally basically acknowledged and picked up on the books. Page 39 is a general fund budget, and I think that's kind of meaningful if you look at the revenue. The city was short of under governmental revenues. In total, the revenues were 471,000 dollars less, but then the expenditures were almost 700,000 dollars less. So the budget, even after the transfers and everything, ended up 136,000 dollars better than the budget was. And there's some more, things on pensions and the health insurance. Supplementary information breaks down cemetery, LGEA, and road fund. 47 is a breakdown of all the general fund expenditures. Pages 48, 49 are control and compliance in general. And then 50 and 51 is a report on the federal money. And there weren't really any findings on either one of those. We had in the past, occasionally had a finding, sometimes it was about fair to bid, but the one primarily one, we had one about paving, and then you went through that whole thing with me about how, it's pretty much simple source because you just don't have, you only have one company that's even interested in doing any paving here. 52 is just more about, 52 and 53 are more about the federal programs. We did have a management letter at the end from not having, probably not having findings. These are kind of areas of suggestions. We take random samples of all the dispersals per year, and we like to see invoices all individually stamped as being paid. And we did find a few times where the state one was stamped, not the rest. And the only reason for that is an accidental possibility of making duplicate payment. And it's probably not a real serious thing with you all, because you know pretty much what you buy all the time, and you probably an invoice would stand out to you if it came back through the second time, but that's the suggestion. And then there was one, there were times during the year, and partly because of this construction running, probably, that you had some money on hand that was greater than the amount of the 250,000 dollars at the bank plus the amount that the bank pays in securities. So that's just one to monitor, and probably that one takes care of itself now that that construction project is over. All right, that is the report. Any questions? It took us a long time to get through this, and I think I was here about four times. As I said, we just had a lot of things happen this time. Kylis is at the office. We had a, my daughter who works with me lost her father law unexpectedly, and we just had, we've had one for the years. She has, she went to a different doctor Friday, and she's had a couple of good days now. So we're kind of hopeful that maybe she's turning on something that really, really works. But she had gotten down to averaging probably less, you know, one day a week. So. Anything from anyone?
Can you make any questions? Now our reading industry will be doing well.
I started to say.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Did they say we were positive 5 million dollars on the sewer accounts?
Overall, overall, the bottom line, that's not cash accounts, that's all the sewer lines and equipment and everything too is figured into that. The actual cash and sewer...
Asset value of our lines and our ground.
Everything that the sewer basically owned.
If you want to buy our sewer business, we'll sell it to you for 5 million.
Actually, cash only, they're only about 150,000 dollars in actual cash, but there was Seville, some other funds, and those, just the capital assets, like the sewer plant and all the sewer lines, that was 5.6 million dollars. So.
We got a lot of sewer lines and pumps and pump stations. Nobody has any questions about anything here?
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. All right, any other visitors that wish to speak to us tonight? Do y'all have anything? Come on up and introduce yourself.
I know a few of y'all. My name is Kyle Smith. I'm the owner and operator at Twice as Nice Consignment down here in McCord. I'm here today to address the no parking issue we have on West Union Street. Parking's been acceptable there for as long as I can remember and previous owners. But due to some new construction, there's no parking all the way down West Union Street. We have two parking spots located on the side of our building. They are, one of them is where I park, and one is where my other employee parks at. There's no handicap parking near my building. You have to cross the road. And majority of my customers are elderly-based, you know, they're retirees. This is a retiring community. We do have a parking spot on the adjacent side of the road from my store, in front of Lykan's and down West Union Street in front of the old community auction building. The measurements measured from line to line on both sides of the road is four and a half inches different on this side of the road compared to the side that I'm on. So four and a half inches, and you allow parking, whereas we don't have parking on my side. There's no signs indicating where our parking lot's supposed to be, behind Capers. Multiple occasions, my customers have complained to me about almost getting hit trying to cross the crosswalk there. It's a dangerous intersection coming from both ways. No parking is putting a damper on my business. My business is down almost 40% in the last three months because there's no parking issue. And we want to try to advance and further the business and grow the community was. At this time, feel free to give any advice or ask any questions that you have, but we'd like to try to get this addressed where we can have some type of parking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you understand how much problem is that, you know, where before they had parked, actually just had gone over the curve up next to the sidewalk down beyond and parked up next to the sidewalk there, when it's not possible anymore. State highway requires a curve all the way down through there. And so that took out all that parking going down on his side of West Union Street. It's a problem that we've been talking about for years really, about parking availability in Hartford. Once, you know, we're always open for suggestions, but he mentioned on West Union, there's one spot next to Lykan's right there, and then there's a couple of spots in front of what used to be the home healthcare. But then beyond that, you have to go around Main Street in front of Lykan's branding or the Capers lot, once this construction is finished, would be available for them. We're working on some other locations in that area. But, you know, people, they want to park as close to the building as they can, and they're not able to anymore.
Is there a crosswalk there between Lykan's and...
Yes, there is a crosswalk there.
There is a crosswalk down towards the intersection.
Yeah, between the Lykan's corner and your corner, there's...
Thing that also leads into where we have three handicap ramps at the cross, but there's a handicap by Main Street Motors, a handicap by Images, a handicap by Lykan's, and then you have my corner, there's no handicap ramp there.
There was a reason for that, though, wasn't there?
There was a budget issue with that.
Yes, you know, there's quite a few reasons why that was not included into this project this time. Cost factor was one. It does away with some of the parking because of the handicap ramp that you had to put in. You have to go down and then come back up to maintain the right pitch for handicap accessibility. So there was going to extend out. And then there was some problem with sidewalk in front of his place and the awning support. There are just a lot of issues with that corner. It was going to cost us about, if I remember right, it was something a little over 50,000 dollars just to do that corner and sidewalk and handicap ramp. That's one reason it was left out because it was so cost prohibitive. We could do so much more in other areas. The parking right there in front of his place is not possible because of the big trucks that turn, go down to the landfill, you know, it just requires a lot of space to turn there. Just not enough room to allow parking right there in front of his building. We've looked at all of that, you know, just to be able to park in front of the building, doesn't look like it's possible. We're open for suggestions, any kind of suggestions that we can. We've taken a look at that, besides your building where it's broken, we'll try to get that repaired back into a shape where people can use the full extent of that space there, you know, not be hindered by that hole that's up there. We'll try to get that repaired. But as far as handicap parking, that would be the closest place that we could offer, you know, that would put them on a level of the sidewalk there. But other than that, you know, if you all have any suggestions or anything, you know.
Do you have any suggestions? Like, do you have any ideas of what you think would be best?
I mean, I'm just, I'm confused on why we went from, there was, there was a curb there before, but it had been worn down after so many years, to where we now have three foot of grass all the way down through there that wasn't there before.
Right. Part of that was just the requirements by it being a state highway, you know, it's not a city street.
Is that going to be on both sides?
Pardon?
Is that going to be on both sides? Or is it one side of the road?
The curb?
Yeah.
Well, the sidewalk over there on that side doesn't require a curb for some reason. I don't know why. I mean, I'm not an engineer. I don't know why it was mandated to be that way. But we had no choice in that. But, you know, it wasn't our directive that made it that way. I sympathize with your problem, you know. I'd like to say we had, you know, places to put parking lots that were very accessible to your building. People are going to have to walk a half a block anyway, I think, you know, to be able to use your building. You know, I understand that people are elderly and handicapped, but people nowadays, we want to park right next to the door, you know. It's like I told you, if you can go to Walmart, people will drive around five times to try to find a closer place to the door, you know. That's just the way people are.
The city doesn't own much property down that area, but I think Mr. Shepherd has that lot next to his store just across the street. You might talk with him and see if he'd be open to leasing it for a parking lot. That's within pretty close.
But then they have to cross 231.
I mean, that's the downside of downtown business.
They're on the side of the store, 231. Is it deep enough to park in there long?
There's two, no, I don't think there is. I don't think it is. I think you had to parallel park in there.
Okay, then I think...
I don't think it is. We could measure it and see, but...
If it was, they'd give him, what, three, four, five?
About five spaces there, if that were the case. Okay. Oh, I'm reminded we need a motion to accept a financial audit. I'm sorry we got away from it. You've heard the presentation by Dan, we'll come back to this. You've heard the presentation by Dan regarding this financial audit. Is there a motion to...
Make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, up in the air. All right, thank you. All right, back to this.
Mr. Mayor, I don't even know this gentleman, but I really sympathize with what he's going through, being an owner myself. Is there any possibility that you could push the sidewalk down towards Seurtown? I guess that's the direction. Give him two spots and then start the sidewalk in the curb, or give him a spot? If you're sure I'm saying, I'm very good at pencil and scritching, but I'm not good at this.
Well, you've got utility poles there, and you've got steps coming down from a house.
They were parking there before until you put the curb in. So if you just move the curb down that way...
Yeah, but they weren't supposed to be parking there before.
Oh, I understand, I understand. But they're just trying to resolve, it's just a suggestion. I don't even know if it's possible.
I think part of the problem is it's a state highway, and by law, it's actually supposed to have a curb that entire...
Somewhere the curb starts, though.
It starts up there at the corner.
At his corner, probably. What would be wrong with it starting a car lane down in Red Oak to a sidewalk?
It's already built for one.
I'm just, wait. Look, it opened up with suggestion, and there's mine.
I mean, it's not, it's not an issue that we haven't been considering for years really. And it's slow developing. I think as space becomes available, we'll be looking at it as potential parking. But it's been close proximity to your business, you know.
What about the parking on the side of my building? What if we, the city took into consideration redoing that spot and making three parking spaces out of that?
Well, I mean, that's what we're talking about here. He was mentioning maybe even if there's enough room, put angle parking there.
I think there would be.
But then that creates a hazard of people backing out into 231 traffic, you know, which we'll have to see what the state engineers will allow there. You know, we've got parallel parking on Main Street. We would, you know, the parallel parking up there, what we're talking about, would not be a problem. But I only think there's some space for two maybe in there. If we got it repaired, do you think there'd be three?
I think we can do three.
Well, our goal is to get, to get it repaired. And when we're doing some patching, we're talking about having the blacktop crew come in and just re-blacktop that, taking it out and re-blacktopping a smoother area right there. That would give you two to three places, which would be, we could designate as handicaps or something like that. If you all didn't park there, that would open it up, you know.
You have to park somewhere out there.
Mr. Mayor, that, obviously parking in Hartford is an issue, and it's become more of an issue now that Hartford has gotten busier downtown than ever before. Couple of things that I think we need to note is, is one, our pro-care home health old building is now being occupied. You've got the full complement of the billing office of Kings, and then you've got the hospital. We've got several people, they're the people who are parking. We are in discussions with, from an economic development committee standpoint, that we've discussed with the council about that lot, Wiggins, Steve Wiggins and his family own, which is all that behind pro-care home health, where pro-care used to be, that if we can work out something to offer municipal parking there. Another thought was is to move more of these people who work all day these buildings on the opposite side, maybe come with community banks all building, and make that all-day parking, where everything from Center Street on down would be like an hour or two-hour parking. When you answer about square place you could park, if we could work something out with Mr. Wiggins, this is again speculation, if we can work something out with him, then that would open up an opportunity for you to park all day and open up those spots that you're currently occupying for your patrons to park in. I will say this, we, all these years, we've worried about business in Hartford. What can we do to generate business in Hartford? And now we, now we've got the golden egg, and we don't know how to hatch it, you know what I'm saying? We've got more businesses and more buildings that are being occupied, but yet we've got a problem with parking. So it is something that not just this council, but the economic development committee and other business owners out, my daughter and I, we own three buildings downtown. It is a serious subject. And so it is something we are looking at, and hopefully we can work out something with Mr. Wiggins on that, and that would offer up a whole lot of parking there. At least move you off to where your accessible should come in.
It's just, they were used to parking there. We just have to reprogram them, or they'd be used to parking somewhere. They just have to reprogram them or they'd be used to parking somewhere else, you know. And I think the area in front of the home healthcare and right beside Lichten's would be three, at least three prime spots right there that, I mean, they'd have to come up to the corner safely across West Union, you know. But it's not like we haven't tried to find a solution to the parking situation.
Mr. Mayor, how far is the city from actually being able to strike off the cap, the lot by capers?
They have to take out, you know, the blacktop was already blacktopped. Once they got the line laid and got it connected to the meter down there for our electrical service, they'll have to take that out and put in a sidewalk, you know, in fact, as a buffer against the capers wall. And then we'll have a couple of spaces over next to Lichten's that we'll be able to strike off there. Right now, they're in the process of pouring this up here, so that's probably going to be, you know, it's not, it's not immediate that they're going to be striking that off.
Wouldn't you say in the next thirty, forty-five days?
It could be. There, you know, it depends on the progress they make here on Main Street in this last block here. I mean, they poured one section, one sidewalk today. They have the, once it sets up, then they'll be able to pour the next part and put in the, in the brick pavers section and the flower bed sections. They'll be able to put those in. So, I mean, they've not been able to work continuously on it. They've been here, they've been other projects. And so it'd be hard for me to say when they'll be able to get that. But that is one of their priorities after they get finished with this on Main Street.
If memory serves me correct, when that's done and the way the rotation of the parks is going to come in off of 231, about pulling in by capers and pulling out by, off on Highway 69 could open somewhere around 10, 11 parking spots right there. I know it's not directly in front of your building, but it is one building away.
Well, it's half a block from, from your building and it'd be right up the sidewalk to the crossing there, so. I know it's difficult for the elderly sometimes to walk that far, but that's the safest, I think, way for us to handle parking in that area. We're going to do what we can to try to help you, you know. If you can, we're open, like I said, to suggestions, anything. We're limited on what we can do. They're going to tear up, supposed to grind up and repave West Union Street from the intersection down to Centertown, I think. That's in the process, supposed to have started today and they didn't do it, so. It'll create more of a mess, but when we get done, it'll be a lot better road. But anyway, I wish I could give you a definitive answer and I can't right now. Just tell you, we continue to work on it and try to do the best we can with you. Appreciate you being there, you know, and we sympathize with you, but this is not a problem just developed last night, you know. It's been an ongoing problem, so. Anybody else? Look at the minutes of our last meeting. And a.
Ain't hardly played, Terry.
Hmm?
Ain't hardly played, Terry.
I got corrected, so I guess she wouldn't let, let man say that.
Yes, it didn't end.
Yeah.
She didn't want you to say it.
It said Mayor David Coleman. Guess somebody gave him a promotion.
Mayor, man said Mayor David Coleman led in prayer.
Yeah, he, he's always talking about framing that.
Let's be hearing more native talk. I'll turn the keys over to you. If you've had a chance to read them, I'll accept the motion to adopt the minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
All right. Any questions, discussion about the minutes? All in favor? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. All right, Ms. Tara, you have something for us tonight?
I drafted several ordinances that I think we're going to be getting to later on in the meeting. But I think there were some members of the Economic Development Committee who wanted to address the council. I'll defer to them.
All right. Economic Development Council Committee.
Committee, council, whatever the case may be.
You want us to stand up with him?
You have a big target on that?
Better, better target if you're saying that.
For mostly, I think most of y'all know the Economic Development Committee is a committee that was created several years ago by this council when the occupational tax passed that we could look at the future and the growth of this community. And having said that, Ray Bell, Miss Fisher, Jerry Lichten's are the two representatives currently on the council that sits on it. Myself, my daughter Tara Ward, Rains Evans, and then Lynn Thompson sits on it currently. Our goal is to set and do whatever we can to help the future growth and development of City Hartford. And if you'll just indulge me just a second before a couple of recommendations I'd like to make, there's some points of interest I'd like to point out that is obvious. We are a community. We're an older community. Look, if I'm blessed here in about 10, 15 more days, I'm going to be 61. I'm getting closer to that age of homestead exemption. We are a community that has a whole lot of tax exempt institution this. So we are very dependent on a lot of revenue coming in, occupational tax, our property taxes and things like that. But when you get to looking at all this, these numbers are relatively high for this community based upon other communities across the state. We come together a minimum once a month, sometimes more than that, to discuss and see whatever we can do. And I want you to understand, we don't have any power other than have discussions and to come back and recommend, make recommendations to this committee, to this council. This council from that makes those type of decisions and any expenditures of money from that. Ms. Jody Ashby is a representative from the county's Economic Development Committee. And over the last several months or a year or so, the interest in Ohio County, Hartford, Beverden, Ohio County proper has grown quite a bit, particularly, I guess, since Ozzy Tyler and the relo, and putting some brick houses into this community. And there's businesses and there's opportunities coming available. But their concern is, is what's happening with Hartford. And I just mentioned the tax base. So we've given a lot of thought, we've been a lot of consideration. Tara and I, and I don't know what she does her best thinking, I guess late at night. She'll call me up, she'll text me, and then the other night, it was very late in the night, she texted me and I just called her up and said, Tara, do me a favor, do me one favor. You know, look at Hartford's tangible and inventory taxes. I want to know how much revenue we're getting off of that. Because from a business standpoint, from a business owner standpoint, that can be a drain on a business paying these high tax dollars. I mean, I can tell you in years past, when I sat on the council, there have been other businesses that would come in in the first of the year, end of the year, move their inventory or move it out of the community so it wouldn't be sitting on their property on January 1st so they wouldn't have to pay taxes. When we got to look at that number, that number is one of the highest in the states. And I'll have Tara correct me if I'm wrong on this.
Forty-eight cents.
Huh?
Forty-eight cents per $100, that's about.
That's pretty significant. And if you've got a business like, I used to call it Wim homers, I don't know what the name of it is right now, Ford Line, places like that, they have a lot of inventory or they potentially could have a lot of inventory sitting on their yard. So looking at that, we got to looking and the number came back at approximately 20-some thousand dollars, I think, the City of Hartford is generating. What we'd like to do is make a recommendation. We'd like to make a recommendation that we cut that back to the state average. And that's going to cost us about $10,000 a year, lost revenue. And we're all knowing, believe me, when I sat on that council, it's, you've got bills to pay. What we'd like to do is make a recommendation, cut it back to the state average. It's going to cut it down about $10,000 a year and the EDC receives about X amount of dollars a year. We'd like to turn around and show and take that $10,000 that comes out of our, into our budget, move it back to the general fund, so you're not seeing a loss there. It's going to turn around, your money's allocated to the, to the EDC, turn around and take that money back out of the EDC and put it back in the general fund so you won't see a loss. The second thing we'd like to see is done is property taxes.
Your, in 2015, your property tax rate was over 55 cents per $100 assessed value. The council at that time did actually lower taxes and as of 2018, it was down to 50.1 cents. But that's still over-doubled the state average.
What we're recommending to do is go back and lower it by 20%, down to 40.9. Still higher, still higher than some of our other communities in this, in this county. But it shows a good faith effort. And I'm going to make this, we're asking for people to make investment in City Hartford. If the City of Hartford is not willing to make an investment in itself, how can I ask John Q. Public to come here and do the same thing? Now, I'm going to ask you to do this on a leap of faith. Mr. Chen's presented you with a budget and the budget shows that it's going to be a positive budget. But from this loss, when you're going to turn around and take that $10,000 back out of our funds and move it back to the general fund, you've still got enough buffer in there where you can absorb that cost if it doesn't work. We have to try something. And I don't want to use a narrative that I heard the other night about when these businesses came to look at this county. I don't want to say what they, what they said in regard to looking at Hartford. We have to move first. You know, we have to make that effort. And so, again, we're recommending cutting it down to state average on the tangible and inventory tax, and we're making, making a recommendation to cut it back by 20% on the property tax. We have to make an effort. About four or five years ago, I can't remember, Ms. Martin and I made a visit over to Brad, to Brad Alley, is that his name? I wanted to look at lowering taxes in the City of Hartford. He thought I had three heads. He has never had anybody ask that question before. Never had that, had it, never had that question asked before. Nobody wants to lower taxes. We did make a bold effort, we did lower it that year. And then even actually a couple of years later, the compensating rate, because we did have a little growth, lowered, lowered our taxes to go down again. I'm asking the City of Hartford to invest in the City of Hartford. Your mayor's presented you a budget that's going, that's going to actually have enough room to make this change. We have to make a change. Again, what I said with, while ago when I was talking about these gentlemen, right now you drive downtown Hartford, look at the progress making downtown Hartford with the sidewalks going in. Almost every building is going to have a business in it, with the exception of one next door to the building Tara and I were renovating, to have a business put in it. We're having growth. We're seeing the future of this, this city grow. We've got to make an investment ourselves. So I'm asking to at least consider these ordinances. Let's give it a shot, let's see what happens, to see if it's a shot in the arm, to see if we can see future growth in this community. One more thing I'm going to ask for from the standpoint of the EDC, we have no power to spend money, none, zero whatsoever. We want to make that clear. This is a subcommittee, a committee that makes recommendations about to this council. Y'all vote for the expenditures of money. You're the only one with the power to spend the money. What we are asking to do is, is allow the mayor on up to a $750 limit, that if we make a recommendation to do something based upon his authority, he can approve it at that time. What that does is it allows us not to miss a window of an opportunity. If there's a meeting that one of the members need to go to, if there's a program that we need to be involved with, or something, by the time the committee, the council comes together to meet, that window could have been missed. Again, we're doing everything we can to help come back and grow the community and make Hartford a better place today. So this is nothing any different than what the mayor doesn't already have. He doesn't have to have really council approval upfront, but we want to make it very clear. All money spent by the, or excuse me, not by the EDC, through the EDC funds are clear, documented, and above reproach. So we would like for that to also be done. And then those are the three things I've got. I believe Mr. Evans has got something he'd like to present to you also.
It's not necessarily on behalf of the EDC, but if you'd like me to go ahead and go, I can.
I mean, has anybody got any questions on this? I, I know, it's unusual to come in to ask to have taxes lowered. Please, it's an investment tomorrow and the future of the City of Hartford.
Let me explain to you about property taxes. It's based on our tax base. There's a certain rate that we charge and it gives us an amount over here that we basically get the same amount every year. It can go up to a maximum of 4%, which is not much without having to have public hearings, okay? But what happens then is we're not allowed to change this over here more than 4%. So if we can get businesses to come in and raise our tax base, we have to lower the tax rate to keep this over here consistent, okay? It's called a compensating rate. So if we go ahead and lower, that'll bring businesses in, which will in turn raise our tax base. That's the theory. But it'll also bring in off the national tax, it'll also bring in more insurance premiums, it'll bring in, it'll, it will have effect over our major funding sources if we can lower that tax rate. So it's, it's a bold step, but it's a step of faith, thinking, I know we have businesses that are looking at Hartford and our tax rate is what's keeping them from coming into Hartford.
And there is one more thing I do want to point out. I made a statement that the City of Hartford is a community of a lot of tax exempt. The school board, the wellness center, the courthouse, the community center, all these things are tax exempt. Even the facility I work for, the hospital's tax exempt. But I can tell you, and it's, it's no secret, it was just made public this past week, we are looking to build a new surgical care center. Several million dollars worth of surgical care center. And if we bring new staff on there, there's something that generates revenue for this city greater than property taxes. It's called occupational tax. Because healthcare, good, bad, or indifferent, has a relative good pay scale. So, you know, if we continue to see growth and we continue to bring people in, it may not be paying property taxes, but you can see a growth in occupational tax. So again, any business that would come to town, whether it's through property taxes or occupational tax, can help shore up the taxes and the finances in the City of Hartford. So that's our recommendation. You can have any questions, we'll be glad to try to answer them to the best of our ability. But remember, we have to make an investment and it has to start with us first.
The amount we're talking about losing is, right now would be approximately $87,000 out of roughly about a $1.4 million income. Eight-six, 87,000 out of 1.4 billion. So it's doable. It means that we'll have to watch.
Mr. Mayor, did you not say that even after this reduction, there was still a buffer left in your budget?
I think there is, yes. Anyway, that's, that's the presentation. The question is, do you want to see those tax rates come down? Do you want to see the mayor have that limited ability to spend some money should the need arise in the Economic Development Committee's vision?
And because I'm a tightwad and I'm on that commission, it won't be spent frivolously.
More daily. More daily. We didn't put a day, put a timeframe on that. Seven hundred and fifty dollars every day for a third day.
But before we have, before we have, I mean, we need the motion if we're going to discuss it, that's Robert's order, rules of order, way of doing things. Whether you accept the motion or not is after discussion, but if you want to discuss it, we need a motion to lower the tangible property down to the state average of 22.
Actually, you don't do a motion for that, that's an ordinance. That would be an ordinance, that's a.
Put them between an ordinance and.
I mean, it's in your.
What is?
Your ordinance or your property.
Oh, for tonight's consideration, yeah.
He only thinks of your limit.
Do what?
Well, your limit is the only thing I think that he discussed that we would need a motion on.
The $750?
Actually, it's my understanding it's already written into the ordinance for a presentation, so.
Okay.
The only thing you need to vote on would be the $700 approval by yourself.
Should include that into the ordinance?
No, no, that would just.
That's not, that's not.
And I, and I'll, I'll kind of comment from a legality standpoint, too. I think the mayor would like that just so he knows that he has the council's support. Under the law, under a mayor council standpoint, he does have appropriation of funds and under municipal order, he can spend up to $2,500. But I think he's wanting to kind of show some good faith between the EDC and his own, showing that it be of transparency.
Right. That's, that's the biggest thing. We would love things to be as transparent as possible, everything above reproach.
Ray, will you make a moment?
Can I?
I'm ready to motion.
I'll second it.
I'm going to say it, I'm saying.
I'll make a motion and let David make a.
I'll make a motion, let David make a motion.
I'll second that.
It's been discussed, I was trying to figure out if y'all have made the motion.
Which ordinance are we talking about here?
Twenty-nine. Three, okay, so I got two.
But they got a motion right now. They got a motion right now.
I second.
Okay, all right. Any discussion about the motion on expanding limitations? Any discussion about the motion on that? Okay, if there is none, all in favor, but I flip your hand, okay, thank you, motion's carried.
Then you can spend some of the $750.
Yeah, okay. All right, Rains, tell us what you've got for us.
Okay, I'll take the floor. It's big.
We only approved one thing a night.
I saw it as a photo. I have a lovely little picture here. It's a proposal for a flower garden on Washington Street, and I guess you'd say it's, you call it the bowling green, I don't know actually where you'd say it's at, but behind the newspaper, radio, the islands.
Train on that road here, those two median.
I had a landscaper drop a little plan for it, if you wanna look at it, there it is. But it's for $1,350.
And he proposes putting in?
It's crepe myrtles.
Okay.
And, yeah, I can kinda read it. And Chinese boxwoods, I believe is what it says, but...
Are there any colors?
The crepe myrtles will have color.
Well, we need some perennials in there, too.
He discussed perennials, a lot of it depends on maintenance and things of that nature, whether or not the city would want to do it, if he wants to do it, it'll need to be discussed, but for the crepe myrtles and the boxwoods, $1,350.
To get it put in, he will take care of preparation of soil.
Yes.
Turd lines or whatever.
Right.
It's those two islands.
It's those two bowling, or icon bowling, or anything, the two little islands in front of rocks and islands.
Yeah.
They're what about ten feet?
Other than Talon's house.
Okay, yeah.
It's just, they're just playing their ass, as only are right now. I can't make any plays out of there.
I just think it's ugly.
By the way, Mr. Mayor, while we're on that subject, and about that islands, because we go down that way so much to come out, do yourself a favor and look at the road there on the right, crossing the island, and the house where Mrs. Boosley, I think you split? It looks like that ditch is undercutting the road, the black, the concrete covered bit, there's areas where the water runs downhill so fast, it looks like it's come underneath of it, undercut, it looks like I saw some undercutting.
Okay.
I wouldn't think it'd be a major undertaking, it would just be a step, I guess, in the right direction to kind of unify, I should say. Some of the part, do what?
Are you volunteering to maintain it?
No.
Well, I can't speak.
I'm no gardener, I'm no landscaper.
Well, it's just low maintenance.
Dean Gray.
I don't know if crepe roads are low maintenance, it's just gonna grow.
Dean Gray, yeah.
What's name is company?
He doesn't have a company.
I'm not his company.
He's not even a landscaper, he just took it up.
He's a landscaper.
He's a water bee.
She's a gin singer.
Yeah. All right, motion to accept this or not?
Fail.
Second. All right, discussion regarding the motion.
I think we need some perennials in there.
Need some hoes.
You tell him, he mentioned it.
Perennial.
I know what those are.
What?
Yeah.
No, the one.
The money would come out of the economic development funds, BIS funds, okay?
So is that a modified motion to accept it with perennials?
No, he mentioned the cost when he was doing it, that $1,350.
Cost does not include perennials. I discussed it, his recommendation, 'cause I like lilies, and I made a recommendation. He said, for the time being, it would just be best to have this, because...
There may be a quilting club that wants to take that on as a project, put perennials in there.
We quilt, we don't dig.
Voice cast.
They require a lot less maintenance if there aren't perennials.
Any more discussion? If you're in favor of doing this, and uplift your hand, thank you, motion carried.
Good job. Success. You and Matt can get a motion.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council tonight?
Just for you.
You want me to get back to Matt?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Give mine.
I have one ordinance that I don't think is on here today, and I don't have it in my pile, but the golf cart amendment. You didn't get a copy?
Two.
Did I? Oh, I did, I'm sorry, I thought this was, yeah, I have it. I thought it was back. It was outside. Ordinance 201904, you all had discussed some months ago about amending the golf cart ATV ordinances regarding the dates that permits would be due.
Yes.
And during that time period, it appears that our state legislature has actually amended the golf cart statute. So we were going to have to amend our ordinance anyway to comply with the state requirements. So what you have in front of you is an amendment of that statute that sets out the requirements of how, what a golf cart must be equipped with to operate on a city street. And primarily, it has to include headlamps, taillamps, stop lamps, front and rear turning signals, and one red reflex reflector on each side of the rear, and also an exterior mirror mounted on the driver's side.
And a parking brake.
Size, and on the back, there's one more reflector back there, and it's got our permit sticker on it.
And so, yes, and a parking brake, and they want seatbelts.
Yes.
So, for you to have, for you to have a golf cart in the City of Hartford, it practically has to be a car.
And the horn, it says, the horn, it means...
I think they have horns, but don't they?
Well, they have lights on them, but most of them no.
Okay, I thought they had a button on the horns.
And that's the new state?
That's the new state requirement, that's straight from the statute. Section B sets out the permit stickers, and you all had talked about making them renewable each year on July 1st, and they shall be displayed on the rear driver's side of the vehicle.
Do we have a fine inherent for people?
That is under your ATV ordinance, I believe it's $50 the first offense, $100 the second, I think is how the original was written. So that's written.
So, may I ask a question, they say golf carts, does that include any type of motorized vehicle?
That's just for the golf carts. Now, the ATVs and everything, they have their own requirements, which is already set out in our ATV ordinance.
So they have to have a turn signal on a golf cart, so hand signals are not appropriate?
That's the state.
Yeah, this is gonna require some things, for some people that run these up and down the highway.
This is not City of Hartford, in my understanding, the dividend is also updated, there's to reflect the same, but this is the statute, this is straight from the statute.
It's gonna be easy to enforce, you see the law, I'm pulling out.
Yeah, 'cause it's not gonna be complied.
Right.
That's right.
What about them kids driving?
You are not supposed to operate without a license, and you're only supposed to operate within daylight hours.
Well, you need a license.
Yeah.
In case, in case it's raining.
Very good point. Oh, heavy fog.
Take it up a frankert.
Very good point, Mr. Andrew. What about a riding mower? What about a riding mower if you cross on the back street?
A ride, I'm sorry, sir.
A riding mower, what if you have to go across one of the back roads or go in the old yard?
A riding mower.
Oh, just to cross the street? You can just cross the street with one, you just can't use it as a joyride vehicle throughout the town.
We don't want you to carry a bomb sack.
Well, how about a tour?
Actually, the thing is, if the city hall will catch a lot of flak over this, and people don't realize it's a state ordinance, and it's not our choosing.
Yes. Can it be posted on the...
We can get it, we can get it advertised, obviously.
We need a motion to accept this?
First reading, first reading on it, somebody wanna read this, not a motion for it right now, we just need a first reading on it, somebody read that, read the first half part of it, Mary Bill.
City of Hartford, ordinance 2019-04, an ordinance to amend portions of ordinance number 2011-09 regarding the regulation operation of golf carts on designated city streets to comply with KRS 189.286, as well as amend both ordinance number 2011-09 and ATV ordinance number 2016-06 to establish that permits will expire July the 1st of each year.
Okay, that's the first reading of it. We'll have the next reading next month, and move on adopting it then, all right?
Did you see where the definition of what a golf cart is according to the KRS? Because most people that's driving down the road doesn't meet that definition at all. This is, golf cart means the self-proved of that is designated for the transportation of players or maintaining equipment on a golf course while engaged in playing golf or supervising the play of golf, or maintaining the condition of the grounds on a golf course. That's not really the...
I think they're saying that's a purpose of the vehicle, the original purpose.
They just said what a golf cart is. So, if people argued that, it would be right out of the KRS, and they...
Anyone on this table is more than welcome to run for state legislature, we'll get you out there, you can talk some sense.
Like I'm not playing golf at all, it's not a golf cart, yeah.
Okay, do you have something else for us?
Nothing that's not already on the agenda later down.
All right, okay. Next, we'll take a look at our financials, if you have any questions regarding any of those, that would be a time to bring it up.
So where do we pin your $10,000 at?
Only after your approval gets a second reading.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
If I have any questions about any of the financials?
I didn't mark a thing on there this time.
Do what now?
I didn't mark a thing on there. Probably need to go back through it. Normally, I'm marked.
If I have any questions on the intermodal motion to adopt the financials as they've been presented?
I'll make the motion.
Second, okay, no more discussion, anybody? All in favor, uplift your hand, okay, thank you, motion carried. All right, we're looking for, for old business now, before you should have the budget for this coming year, ordinance 2019-02, we'll need a reading of that, and intermodal motion to adopt as is presented. So, Eric, you wanna read the ordinance 201902?
I got 201905, is that?
Oh, two is the budget.
Oh, okay, I was looking at the wrong one. Yeah, I'll read that. All right. Ordinance 2019-02, an ordinance adopting the City of Hartford, Kentucky's annual budget for the fiscal year 07-01-19 through 06-30-20 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government, whereas an annual budget proposed, and this has been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council has reviewed such budget proposal and made necessary modifications. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City of Hartford, section one, that the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2019, and ending June the 30th, 2020 is hereby adopted as follows.
Okay, all right, I'll intermodal motion to adopt this budget, okay, second? Okay, all right, discussion regarding the budget, any items? What you see here is what will go into the paper. What you see here is what determined what goes left face, okay? Any discussion? All in favor of adopting this budget, uplift your hand, thank you, motion's carried. All right, next item is planning and zoning, it's in here because I just have been asking for recommendations for people to serve on the planning and zoning. I have a new member in Bill of Pockets that's going to serve on the commission, but I still need, still need one to serve on the Board of Adjustments, which meets three or four times a year. Must be somebody that has a property area in Hartford, doesn't have to live here, but if you come up with somebody, you know, like to know a name sometime, okay? Sooner the better. I understand that in passing, all right?
Well, pardon the pushes, if you were trying to do your comprehensive plan...
Do what now?
The first voting, and trying to get the comprehensive plan going, until we can get that, we can...
Yeah. The planning and zoning is working on their comprehensive plan, and we need a full contingent and the planning and zoning commission and board to act on that, so sooner the better, okay? All right, open the floor for new business now, take a look at, should be in your packet of ordinance 201903, and this is... I thought the tangible property was going down to 22. I thought that was the state.
The 29, 25 is the state average, when you subtract the zeros, but I just left the water craft the same as it was.
Yeah, but I thought it was nothing.
But that's the state average when you exclude all zeros.
All right, ordinance 2019-03, this is the one that we were talking about, bringing the tax rates down on tangible property and property, property tax rate, okay? This is what we're talking about here. We can't, we will, we'll, like, tonight or anything like that, we'll have a first reading, so you wanna read the...
I can't even see it tonight, I don't have my glasses.
Tony, you read it, you got your glasses.
The ordinance that talk?
Yeah, just the highlighted, the capitalized stuff.
An ordinance letting taxes for general multiple purposes for the fiscal year of January 2019 through December 31st, 2019, on all taxable properties within the taxing jurisdiction of the City of Hartford on each $100 of fiscal year 2019. Access valuation is followed on real property, does it mean real estate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. At .409 cents tangible and personal property, .2925 cents, including real and personal property of public service companies.
Okay, first reading.
That 29, .25 is 29 and a quarter cents?
Yeah.
Okay.
When does this go into effect, as soon as...
Yeah. Well, of course, the property tax will be effective when we start issuing property tax bills in October, September, October is when that'll, when that'll be utilized, and that's when we do the water craft as well. Tangible property is the same time.
It's January 1st. As of January 1st. The asset is January 1st. So it'll have to go into effect this year.
Yeah, this year's tax bill, so...
Well, if we're gonna lower it, why are we doing it this way? I mean, can't you lower it and then send them in? If we're gonna lower some of this property, well, I thought personal property was, oh, it's 40, okay, never mind, it went down.
It was 50.
Pardon, pardon that senior slip.
Okay, was it 40.9 or just 40?
Did he drop it down 20 percent from the 50.9? Did he drop it down 20% from the 50.9 and bring it down?
Was it?
Yeah.
Was it 50.9 or was, I thought it was even around that 50?
According to the 2018 regulations, department revenue, it's at 50.9. That's what I use.
Okay. I think it was 50. Tom?
Can I make a quick comment? I want, this is, I realize this is a bold spin, but I think it's helping this community move in the right direction for the future growth of this community. To help bring other people in, not just people, but businesses in.
I thought, I thought that it was 50. Was it 50.9?
It's .409 and...
Okay, alright, that's first reading. We'll take it up next month.
I'll bring up one more new business that I did realize it wasn't on the ordinance.
You had your chance, okay.
There's also included here ordinance 2019-05. It wasn't on the agenda, but that's a reason y'all asked me to create regarding parking.
At the last meeting, we made a motion to ask her to, to come up with an ordinance regarding parking on Center Street. East, East Center already has two hour parking on it. We haven't said very much because of the courthouse and the businesses in this area, but once they tear down those buildings and create a parking lot, you know what I'm talking about?
Old Farm Bureau building.
Yeah, Old Farm Bureau building. Once they tear that down, then we'll start enforcing two hour parking on, on East Center Street. But we've been asked to limit West Center Street to two hour parking. In fact, was also with a 15 minute parking slot right there next to 231, the first slot, okay? Alright, so somebody want to read this ordinance here? Mary, I'll go back to you.
Alright, ordinance 2019-05. An ordinance imposing parking restrictions on portions of Center Street and downtown Hartford for the convenience and safety of the citizens.
Alright, so that's first reading on that. That's what happens when you get old. Okay. The next item that we have for discussion is solicited water software.
Should we go back to the budget? About to talk about sewers.
Okay, sewer's not on there right now, but we can go ahead and take care of it.
Yeah, we'll take one. The, the grant supposedly that they're giving us was only voted on to continue through June or to, yeah, through June this year. So I asked one of the members to be sure and bring that up at the June meeting and extend it on to the end of the year. I don't know if he really, you know, was just patronizing me or what, but he said he would. But it wouldn't hurt to follow up and make sure they do it. We need to tell our representative.
I got that.
Alright, hopefully we have a flu meter in place, maybe. Pardon? I've got it down here to talk about it under information of what we can... Uh, water software is next on the agenda. Let me just tell you what that is. It's, it's pretty brief. Our water billing and collection uses computer software that incorporates what they call an Itron. It's a device that we don't have to go and manually read meters. We can drive by and electronically it records the reading for each, each meter. Saves a lot of time. Uh, that was purchased how many years ago? Was that?
2016.
Was this 2000, that? Okay.
They only la, none of it will ever last more than five years. Because the software will always be updated.
Yeah. The representative for the company came by, told us that we could go ahead and use it for two years the way it is now. Or for free, they will update it with a, the newer system. But it does require us incorporating new software into our computers. Uh, the device is very handy. It can not only read the meters, it can tell hourly usage of that meter and give you a reading like, you'll be able to tell when a leak started, uh, stopped, you know? It tells you a average monthly reading off of the one device, but it don't, anyway. How much was it? Three?
31.
I think it's $3,100 to upgrade, it's in that $3,100 range. To upgrade to this newer software.
Does it come with a new reader and everything or no?
I don't think you need a new, new reader. It's just upgrading, but...
Software?
Yeah. Instead of using one type of system, they call it, they got initials for, you know, for a new type of system.
Because you've also got $2,400 in training, right?
Why not?
There's $2,400 in training.
Yeah. It's either that or go back to reading everything manually, which, yes.
While we're talking about it, there's still a pretty good leak on Evans Court that probably needs to be...
Back there, were they repaired?
Yeah. It's pretty bad.
In that parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like a bird bath now. It's just, it's just like a huge puddle out there. It stays there. They worked on it. They dug it all out, but it's, it's still leaking, there's still...
Maybe you struck water back there. Maybe you struck water. We'll take, we'll have to take a look.
Just right around that meter there.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, um, that's not the one we want. That was $20,505.
What's in the next page though? Where you signed it?
Well, it's right here, I thought, in it. Right here's where it is. Okay, it's, uh, software upgrade is, uh, from MBRS to FCS software upgrade. They're not charging us anything for that. Uh, the Itron software remote installation configuration setup takes five hours at $175 an hour, $875. The mobile IMI drive-by cloud setup fee, uh, $950. On-site and remote startup services. Anyway, $3,690. That's still a... I want a table list on next month. I don't, I'm not satisfied with that. Was it the second page? I'm not satisfied with presenting. Uh, that looks more like it. Okay. Software upgrade's not going to cost us anything. The installation, configuration setup, uh, the software, $875. Training is $2,400. So it's going to be $3,315. And that'll get us through for the next five years supposedly. So anyway, uh, it's like everything else is, they can't make it last for 10 years because they got to sell you the program every five years or whatever, so... So anyway, uh, if we can keep going with our current system for two years, then we got to go to that or we can go to it now and it won't cost us anything for the software. If we go in two years and we have to go to it, they'll charge us for the software, so... Anyway, that's what it is.
How much is software?
Pardon?
How much is the software?
They didn't really tell us, but it's going to be, the way that they're, it's going to be in the thousands.
So it's going to let you, what's it going to let you do that you can't do?
It's an upgrade to the Itron that we've got. Basically, all they're doing now is just going out and reading. We're not using Itron to maximize its ability. There's going to be training to come in to teach the guys, the field people, how to better utilize the Itron itself. You want to go get Itron?
What that Itron can do, it can, it can produce management reports, work reports, any number of things concerning the water.
I guess my question is whether or not your upgrade could pay for itself and what it could do that you're not doing already. You see what I'm saying?
Well, what we've got now is only going to last two more years and then they're going to quit supporting it.
The handheld is going away and you'll be using a tablet. So you have to have this software. This is like the first step before you would actually implement the whole thing. We will be forced to do that later on. But if we can do, you can do the software now and get that set up. Then when the handheld becomes obsolete, then you go buy their tablet, but thereafter you can buy a tablet from Walmart or it will not be in like a specialized piece of equipment right now.
Well, we've already got tablets, you know, that we can't be using.
But it, but if this one goes down, you have to make sure that get it out in time to get it back to read by the next month. We won't have that issue anymore. But I mean, they control that, the software updates.
They and only them?
They, um, well, this software, Itron, actually uploads into our accounting package. Okay, so you're, you're kind of married to Itron. You really don't have a choice there.
Dang it.
I mean, you could buy a new accounting software and then you could get something different.
I'll make a motion about, or spend the money for...
You're going to have to do something later.
Yeah.
Either now or two years from now, you'll be forced into it and the cost will be higher.
Yeah.
Second? Okay, any discussion to this? Okay, all in favor of doing that now? Alright, next.
You have a hand to it.
Motion carried. Uh, two things that I have that are not listed. One's on the flu meter. We've talked about this. Engineer got back with me, gave me some estimates of what he thinks. I think he's a little high in some areas. What he found was a company that makes a fiberglass preformed meter. From, you just said you cut your sewer line, you set this thing in, rehook your sewer line. The electronics then have to be installed to monitor the flow, which we already use, uh... They can already beat that by a fellow that we used out here at the water plant, Jeff. It's Jeff's last name. Morris, Jeff Morris, borough son.
HDM.
He does our electronics down here and he can put in an electronic system and monitor this thing. And he's saying that, uh, it is, it's going to be real deep. So he's saying it has to be done by contractor. He estimated $20,000. I don't think it'll cost $20,000 for them to install a meter. And then he allowed $5,000 just contingencies, which you never know what that's going to be. Maybe that's just the engineering part of it. Anyway, the flu meter, he says $46,000. Now, if we start reading what we're sending to them and just paying for what we're sending to them and not for all the additional, we can save $46,000 in just a matter of months, I think. Especially during times when bottoms are covered with water. So I'm recommending that we proceed and that's, like I say, that's just an estimate. And I think it's a little high. Like conservatively, I expect it to be a little less than that, but, uh... We do know that the meters about $15,000 is preformed. Sitting there is better than us trying to have John Ross construct one out of concrete or something like that. They just pop it in there and have it functioning in just a matter of time.
Well, it'd pay for itself, wouldn't it, after what?
It should, in just a few months, I'd say, yeah.
Because I read on there, you know, where they got the rainfall and all that.
Right. And we'll know better what we're sending them and we'll have some, we'll have some, uh, reason to point out that they need to tend to their land and put charges for it. So if you're interested in doing this, then I can contact the engineer and tell him to go ahead with the planning and we'll contract, contractor to install, install it. But if you're willing to spend that much money, it'll come out of occupational tax because it is infrastructure. Alright, is there a motion to that effect? Okay, and second over here, have any discussion regarding?
Move forward.
Okay, all in favor then, uplifted hand. Okay, thank you, motion's carried. Um, and then I have one comment about our police department. They were going to be here tonight, but they haven't shown up. We've, uh, had one who resigned, the worst part to have with us now, helping during vacations and training. When they have to go for training or extended time, he helps us. But he's got another business. He can't devote time to the police like we need. We're in the process of trying to find recruits, hiring people that we can hire and send for training. It's a long process. We've got one young man who's showing an interest. He lives here in Hartford. We're planning on just having him ride, do some riding loans for a couple of months and just see how, how things work out with him. If he does, then we'll send him to Richmond to go through the training. By the time we get through, it's going to be about a year long process. Of course, he will be on payroll while he's up there.
Do we have any contractual documents to make sure that if we train him for that year, we send him through school, we've got him ready, that he'll stay with us?
He'll be committed to us for a certain amount of time.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get our years out of him or he might have to pay us back.
Alright, good.
I just want to give that to you as information, you know, to let you know that we are trying. Police departments everywhere are having a hard time. I think people want to go into Owensboro Sheriff's Department, you know? Liberdame has problems with it. We all have problems with it. We've been lucky to maintain what we've got so far. Still provide 24/7 service for assistance to Hartford, but that's all I have. So now if anybody else has anything you want to bring up?
Just basketball goals. The basketball goals.
Okay, go ahead.
We have a problem down here on...
Liberty Street.
Liberty Street off of Union over here. And we have a bunch of kids that are whoa, banged down, which I'm finding out that right away it's not the bank. I mean, in the ditch, it's the people that live there. It is their ditch. And the kids are in the middle of the road, but they got the basketball goal on the edge of the trackway. The parents is involved in it now, so they dealing with the old lady and old man. And he's 89 years old and she's fighting. and, and he's 89 years old, and she's lighting, and the mother come over shaking her, shaking him, so, over the basketball go, and old lady was asking me, she just wanted, she's, she don't want them to have to use her insurance, because one of the kids get hurt down in the ditch, jumping down there, getting the ball out, and I could see her point, and then I see the kids, at least they staying out of trouble, you know? So I don't, I just wanted to bring it up, because when cars do come down through, they got to stop, because these kids are being bought and stuff, and they, we're talking about 10, 11, and sometimes, uh, 16, 17 year olds down there. But it's making a problem there with the neighbors, neighbors feuding against each other.
Sounds like a police department problem, right?
That's what it's happening.
They've been calling in too.
Yeah, they've been calling in at times too.
They get tired of it.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
Mr. Mayor, may I, you know, as we looked at the taxes, met a recommendation tonight, we just made a comment about the police department, you know, it may not be too far in the future where you're gonna have to start looking consideration of doing a joint venture with the county or with Beverdame, and once consolidated police department, if you're having a hard time filling the roles with the municipalities setting the way they are, you may have to look at those opportunities out there, and I'm not saying that we're doing anything to lose our identity, but it might show, shore up a opportunity to have a better force and provide better coverage, maybe at a lower rate, if we don't have duplication of services, but again, it may not be the future, but I have some, one time you might want to start thinking about at least having those discussions with you or the county or Beverdame.
We almost have one now, because I think the other night, one of our, whoever was on duty that night went over to help Beverdame and the sheriff's deputy with an issue over the, of Beverdame, I think it was, so, we almost have one body now, we're just, uh-
Only lessons learned, I mean, you've got larger communities in the state that already has their type of services.
All right, anything else?
What about the big tank where water comes in, it's 10 foot deep, seven foot, full of mud, anything been done with that?
Oh.
Under the water?
I don't know where they got that, because I've looked at that thing, you go, if you go all the way around it-
I wondered when you said they said it.
Huh?
Man, you was down there when they were talking about it.
Yeah, if you go down where, where it is out, that, you know, where they, after he goes all the way around the U shape, well, you can see the bottom down there, you know, that, I don't know where they getting that 10 foot of mud in there.
In there.
Yeah, now, we can flush, we can flush that out, but right now, it's not that much of a problem, I don't think, I think it's-
I was thinking it's a big problem.
Huh?
They had me believing it's a big problem.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
No?
Because if you go down there and look, you know how, how it comes in here, and the sodium permanently is added here, and it goes down, comes around?
Yeah.
Right there, you can see the bottom of it. I mean, I don't know about accumulation there, I don't know where they got that, but anyway, uh, we do need the, the lagoons over here, the backwash lagoons, we do need them cleaned out, and that needs to be reworked, maybe get some time, some money, that's one of our projects that we gotta do, but I, I don't think that other one, I mean, they can flush that out anytime, but it's a problem.
Good.
It'll, it'll go over to the, to the backwash lagoons where it goes, but we do need cleaning them out.
What about the water tank, are they, working on it?
It's working on, engineer's working on it. Somewhere or another, I saw where there was an influx of money, I can't remember if it's federal government or who it was-
EPA came up with it.
That was putting several million dollars into water projects, and I'm hoping that's a grant that grab will get us slapped up with.
That'd be good.
The estimate was about $300,000, half of it gonna be grant, and half of it will be us, which I think we can swing short term loan, take care of that in just about a matter of three, four, five years, something like that, not have to issue bonds or anything. Anybody have anything else?
Make the motion, you carry it.
Second, anybody, second?
Second.
All in favor of up to the tan, motion is carried, beings are. Thank you all for your attendance.